I will call to order the work session for January fourteenth of the City Council.
Good evening, Mayor and members of council. We have Jason Arsvold from Ellers here to present some information on the Parkway neighborhood financing. We also have the developer in the audience as well. But Jason, you want to come up to the twenty minute, you can run the meeting and I'll have you just play through the PowerPoint. And we'll stop for any questions if you have any as we go along, but take it away, Jason. Thank you.
Okay, will do. Well, good evening, Mayor and members of council. Jason Arsvold with Ellers, City's financial advisor. Is this, you have this map in there. Okay, so I kind of picked the story up here in the middle. I just, maybe I'll back up just a bit here. We're talking about the site that's on the screen. A little bit about the background of this. We'll talk about some analysis of the developer numbers that are here. Concept for financing, some of these improvements that we've been under consideration here, and then some discussion with everybody. And I kind of dive into the middle here, but I'm going to back up a little bit because I know we have new members on the city council, and so I don't want to jump in the middle and not catch everybody up. But just to kind of back up a little bit, there's a proposed rental project at the location that was just up on the map. It requires the construction of a public road and some infrastructure and stoplight out at the corner there to the tune of approximately five to six million dollars, probably five and a half to six million dollars. There was some discussion about forgiving some fees, city fees, trunk fees, that would help the developer pay for the costs associated with that. That all came before the council last month, before the holiday. I think at that point, the developer, you know, realized or understood that that wasn't going to be enough of assistance to make the project financially feasible. And so that's kind of where we left it. At the time, there was some direction. I took it from the council to say, look, we don't want to have this discussion without having some information in front of us, and that you're open to alternatives around that. And so that's what, since that meeting, we have been working towards tonight, was to present some of those alternatives. But I will just say that we heard a couple of things, I think loud and clear. First was that there wasn't really any interest in providing any more assistance upfront for the project. The fee forgiveness was generally agreeable, but there wasn't any interest in writing a check to cover the difference, to pay for those needed improvements. So we've taken that into consideration. And then there was some concern about if there was some tax abatement. You know, we've used tax increment financing in the past where, and I'll talk a little more about that for those of you that are new, where you're using the new taxes from the project to pay for some costs over time in some manner. There was some concern about all of those taxes being redirected to the development and having nothing for the city to cover any increased service demands. So it was with those two caveats that we started down the path of working with the developer towards at least a concept to have a conversation with you all tonight about. So part of that solution is that the phasing for the project is intended to happen faster, sooner than was originally presented. So I think we were starting with around one hundred and eighty units, and then moving into a larger project after that of about, I think, around two hundred. As it stands today, and again, these are fluid numbers, because as early as this morning, we were still kind of trading assumptions around this. But it's really talking about moving into a piece where there's about two hundred and seventy units-ish, right? That would happen right away. And then there would be a second phase of about one hundred and eighty units, and then another smaller phase after that. And so what that means is that there's more fees, you know, and more economies of scale there to forgive, to offset project costs, but also that there's more tax revenue coming in sooner because of the assessed values increasing more rapidly than had been previously anticipated. So that in and of itself changed a little bit of the dynamics of this. And then what we had done then, Ellers had done, is we looked at those revised numbers, and we conducted what we call a pro forma analysis. And I'll talk a little bit more about what that means. But basically, what we're doing is we're looking at all of the developers' detailed numbers and projections for the project. And when we do that, we're reviewing all of them to see, are they representing the cost accurately? Are they projecting the revenues and expenses appropriately that we would like to see consistent for the market? Are they financing this in a way that is consistent with the market? And at the end of the day, what we're really looking for is, how much money are they going to make on this project? And if it's more than what the market demands to do a similar project, then we don't want to assist the project. If that amount is less, then there's some justification to provide assistance to cover that gap, so that the project can actually proceed. So that's fundamentally the exercise that we're undertaking. It's done to confirm if there is a need for assistance, and beyond that, how much should be granted in order that we don't exceed some of those thresholds that I talked about. So that's really what I'm talking about here. This is just an example of that. We're looking at all of these factors and comparing them to industry standard. So again, as I mentioned, land, construction, developer fee, all of the assumptions, their return on investment. We're making sure, as I said, revenues and expenditures, that means, you know, rent levels, all of that. If those are underrepresented, it's showing a larger gap than is truly needed. So we want to make sure those are accurate, and that the debt service assumptions are correct for the project. And what I can say is that, just kind of the bottom line of all of this, is that all of those projections do meet what we would expect to see. The rents that are projected here are reasonable for the market. The costs that have been represented likewise, the way that the expenses are projected to be, you know, incurred in the project are also within industry standards. And so all of that, you know, checks out. But what we then looked at, their initial numbers assumed that there was no payment by the developer for the road, and then the fee forgiveness wasn't in there yet either. So what we made the assumption was that, look, the developer has to absorb all of those costs for infrastructure, every last nickel of that. And then what can we, if we did that without assisting the project, what would that look like? And when we run that analysis, we determined that that return on investment, at the end of the day, is less than would be required to attract equity and debt for this project. And so in that way, we can confirm that, you know, the project does need assistance. And then the next question, which we'll talk about, is well, how much and in what form, and all of that. But what we're using in this case, and there are several different return on investment metrics that developers use, but just to kind of standardize this across all the projects that we've reviewed recently, we're looking at yield on cost. And what that is, is net operating income, and that's before debt service, divided by the project's total development cost. And that's one common metric that a lot of apartment developers use. And that, you know, should not exceed seven percent. And if it does, it's a project that simply doesn't need public assistance. In this case, without any, you know, public financing, we're down in the fives. And that's lower than what would be necessary to attract investment to get the project done. So-
And that was based on the five billion, or the full?
The, yes, the developer's project absorbing one hundred percent of all of the infrastructure costs.
Including fees?
Yes, and payment of all the fees. Yes, yeah. And so with that, we can conclude that if you choose to provide assistance to the project, that doing so would not unduly enrich the developer, and it wouldn't lead to a return on investment any greater than what the market would command for a rental project like this. And this is primarily driven by current cost of doing this kind of development, interest rates where they're at today, but probably the biggest thing is that extraordinary infrastructure cost that the project would have to bear in order to proceed. So, and then I just want to be clear that this, that's what this, that's what all of this analysis says. So our role in this was to, you know, if you choose to proceed with this, you can do so knowing that providing the assistance isn't providing a return on investment any greater than what the developer would get in the private market, doing a project that was in a greenfield site served by utilities, for example. That's all that this analysis is saying. It's not a recommendation that you do the project, and I just want to point out that, you know, it's still obviously a council policy decision about whether you want to do any of this. And so that's, I think, an important thing and distinction to understand. So with that, you know, as I mentioned, we said we'd come back with at least a concept of an option, and how this could get done, sticking within the guide rails that you all set out for us back in December. And, you know, as I mentioned, the more aggressive development timing helps with that. We would continue to, and we have in the analysis that we conducted, assume that the fees associated with two hundred and seventy units and one hundred and eighty units for the first two phases would continue to be forgiven, as had been previously anticipated. Those are dollars that, you know, they're trunk fees for the new members that you collect that are really supposed to be for expansion of your infrastructure within the community. And so even if you were to collect them, they are to be dedicated towards something like this, which would be constructing, constructing new public infrastructure. And then what we're proposing here, and that's where we, you know, got stuck the last time, right? That wasn't enough to, for the developer to proceed. So what we're proposing as a concept for you all to consider is to address that remaining gap with what we call pay-as-you-go tax abatement. And I'm going to just kind of divert a little bit here for just a minute to help, maybe again, for a review for you all, but for the new members to understand what we're talking about, when we're talking about tax abatement. So what tax abatement is, is effectively a rebate of the taxes that are paid, that the developer can then dedicate to a bank that will provide it more money to go out and build this road. Okay? So what we're proposing in this case is that we, often, all of the new city's portion of taxes would be abated. What we're suggesting here is that we look at maybe seventy-five percent of the taxes in an abatement. The reason for that, which I'll illustrate, is so that you have some collection of city taxes right away to deal with that increased service demand that is anticipated to come with these new units. And that, the important thing here is that these payments would be made on a pay-as-you-go basis. So what does that mean? It means that, that there is nothing upfront from the city in a pay-as-you-go arrangement. It means that you would commit to seventy-five percent reimbursement of the taxes for a period of time. The developer would need to go out to the private marketplace, raise those dollars to pay those costs, and rely on those tax rebates to make up those loan payments. So in that way, there's a financing mechanism there, but it's not the city's financing mechanism. Sorry. Stop me at any time. I know this is kind of a lot.
If this behaves like a TIF, then how does that relate then to county and school board taxes?
So in an abatement, and I'll talk a little more about that, too, each jurisdiction would have to agree to participate. We know we're not going to get county agreement to participate, and it would be extremely unlikely that the school would participate. So we've assumed that only, in this case, only the city's portion of the taxes get abated.
Okay.
But from there, it functions just the way that the TIFs have in the past for Dayton. So nothing upfront. And then, you know, there are projections about how much abatement will be generated, but the developer actually has to build the buildings, pay the taxes, and to get those rebates. And if something happens along the way where those abatements aren't sufficient to pay out that total assistance, the city isn't making up the difference. The risk here then is on the developer to do that. And as I just mentioned here, with tax abatement, every jurisdiction has to agree to participate. We're only proposing the city in this case. So the way it works fundamentally is that, you know, the developer will pay property taxes on these buildings, just like every homeowner does, twice a year. And then, once those payments are made, then the agreed-upon reimbursement amount would then be made to them. They would take that reimbursement amount, pay the bank, you know, that they borrowed money from, in order to pay for the road. And in that way, the gap would be made up for the financing of the project. So that's at least conceptually how the abatement would work. Are there questions about that before we?
That gap, are we, is that, is that still coming?
Yeah, we're going to talk about that. Yeah, yeah. And I will say that, well, we'll talk about it.
Whatever the gap is, it would be, the seventy-five percent would go towards that if it was paid. We would turn around, write a check back.
Correct. And we would, and we would stop. The idea is we stop doing that when that threshold for return on investment is met, so that we do not over-assist. And I'll talk more about how we protect ourselves in that case as well. So here's, I know it's a small chart, it's kind of hard to read, but as I mentioned, what would happen in this case is that this represents in both columns there, the total city portion of taxes from all three phases of the development as currently conceived over a twelve-year period of time. Okay? And if we, it goes up over time, as I mentioned, the projects get built out, right? So we have two hundred and seventy units coming online, and that's going to come online, not all at once. It's going to get built over about eighteen months or so, or maybe a little longer. And so the value is going to slowly increase. The jumps in there you see are when those next phases come online, right? So there's another second phase. And then the third phase is actually contributing to these increases in taxes. So that's part of this as well, although we didn't contemplate that third phase in the fee forgiveness aspect of this. So what would happen is that, you know, if this gets built as projected, you can see there, starting in 2027, there would be some money that the city would retain from the taxes of this property, and then the rest of that would then go to payment on that pay-as-you-go arrangement that I mentioned, okay? And as it gets to full build out there in 2030, there are about a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars that would be going to the city annually, right? So that's that amount that's there to, you know, cover that increased service demand that was talked about the last time. And then three hundred and fifty-six thousand of that would go to payment to the developer. There's no magic to this breakout, breakout here, other than, you know, you can, you could keep more money for the city, but then it takes longer to pay the gap back to the developer. So this just seemed like a reasonable amount annually for the city, roughly, to cover whatever increased service demand there might be. But, you know, again, this is conceptual, and there's no, no hard magic to this twenty-five, seventy-five split. And then what would happen is that, to the point of the gap, Mayor, is that we would stop those payments at some point along this way, when that return on investment threshold is met. Now, that's somewhere probably between the nine- to twelve-year range. And the reason why I can't tell you exactly yet is because, as I said, as recently as this morning, we were still trading, you know, build-out assumptions. And so the build-out assumptions and the final financing rate are going to play into what that ultimately ends up being. But just know that it'll be indexed back to that final return on investment threshold. And before you would ever approve anything, you will have in front of you, and I'll talk about this, a more fully baked and detailed memorandum that summarizes all of this, the exact amounts, the exact term, all of that, before you would ever be asked to act formally on any of this. Tonight, the thought was, you know, let's talk conceptually about this. Is this even something you're willing to entertain? And then, as we'll talk about next steps, we'll get into, we'll get into that.
So the, you had said that the return on investment, what you would expect to be a threshold, the two, what we're really talking about is two and a half million, at least at this point.
Or less.
Yeah.
Right, of abatement, right.
So if there were none of that, if none of that was returned, it wouldn't be, the project wouldn't happen?
With only the fee forgiveness, those numbers, yeah, the developer's indicating that, yeah, we're not hitting those.
So it's somewhere between zero and two and a half?
Correct.
And I guess that's my question, is you're saying, when we hit that threshold, what is that, what, today, if we were to figure out what that threshold would be, what is that dollar?
Yeah, so I don't, I didn't have it enumerated over on the side, but we've talked about, and we've run numbers on, you know, the most recent iterations that are out there. And we eye view, we start to hit that return metric in that nine-to-twelve-year range. So if you kind of add up the nine-to-twelve years there, I don't, I don't think we go past that. I think, you know, eight's probably too few. And so it might be more in the one-point-eight million dollar range, present value range. Yeah. So that's, and so that's probably about as specific, I think, as we can be with the gap right now. But I think that's the expectation that I would, you know, set for when we come back with the final numbers. That's the range that we're likely to be in, nine-to-twelve years of annual payments.
So you'll have that final number when we?
Yes, absolutely. It all, you would, you'll see exactly what it is, based on all the final projections that are available.
But you got to ask you nine to twelve is where we're going to sit at.
I think so.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so just a little bit about the process. Tax abatement is simpler than tax increment from a procedural standpoint. I know you're used to tax increment. That requires notices to the county and school district. It requires a full plan being developed. Tax abatement doesn't require any of that. We do have to hold a public hearing, and that has to occur, notice has to be published ten days prior to actually holding that hearing. So there's some time to build into that. That, you know, it needs to be held by the entity granting the abatement. In this case, it'll be, you know, the city. We just identify in there the properties that are going to be included, and the estimated total amount. And then, at that public hearing, the council then considers a resolution to approve the abatement, okay? And that resolution is going to specify what the terms of the abatement are, what the benefits are to the city, and that, a finding that this is in the public interest. And one, so once that public hearing is held, and the resolution is considered, typically, what also happens that same evening, and that's what I think we would propose here, is that there has to be an agreement. The resolution isn't enough. There is a formal agreement that you enter into between the city and the developer that specifies all the things that I'm talking about, right? The amount of the abatement, when the payments happen, when they stop, all kinds of other things that you would normally see in TIF agreements that have already been approved, that you, that you're familiar with. It's basically exactly the same kind of an agreement. It's just that we're directing abatement payments rather than TIF payments, in this case. So that's what this would be. So that's the process. It's as simple as that. And so once that's done, then the procedure, the procedural aspects from a council perspective are completed for the abatement process. So in terms of next steps, so I think the big thing for tonight, I think that the developer, and I think the staff would like to understand, is, does this concept of trying to solve for this gap using pay-as-you-go tax abatement workable? Like, is it acceptable to the council? If not, then I think the developer's going to have to talk about what their next steps might look like, you know, don't know what that is. If there is support to proceed in this manner, then what, what I would suggest is that we would then take a look, again, look at this final build-out assumption, look at all the exact final numbers that we're going to use to make part of the agreement. And that's when I say that we would come back to you. And I, I think what makes sense is to have a term sheet, which is a non-binding document that at least lets you take a look at all of those specifics that you're asking about. What are the exact, what is the exact dollar amount? How long do the payments continue? What are the obligations of the developer? What are the obligations of the city? All of the details that would ultimately be the outline for that future abatement agreement that I talked about would be within that term sheet. And what would be accompanied with that would also be a memorandum from us that walks through every facet of the development, and how it meets what we would consider to be industry standards, and what that boils down to with the assistance to a return on investment number. So that, that can be known, so that, and I think that's important, because if there's questions, you know, from the community and constituents and everybody else, you need to be able to tell them that we're doing this, but, you know, we've, we've confirmed with math that the developer isn't receiving any more than they would if they went and developed in a greenfield in Maple Grove, for example. And you're getting a public roadway bill. So that is what that memorandum would do. That term sheet would provide at least some, you'd ask, we have to formally consider that. And that could happen sooner than an abatement hearing, because we've got the, the public hearing notice requirements that I mentioned. Some, provide some assurance to the developer that everybody's on board with more of the exact details. And then what we would do is engage legal counsel to prepare a form, that formal agreement that I mentioned, which would come back at a subsequent meeting, when it had been noticed as a public hearing, to pass that abatement resolution and approve that agreement. So, I mean, that's fundamentally kind of what we're, what we're proposing here as a thought. And really, I kind of already talked about some of this. The one thing I will mention, however, is that, so if all that happens, and we get to an agreement, that, those agreements, everything we're doing here is on projections. And, and I think we all understand that, while we've looked at those projections and feel that they're reasonable, and, you know, for the market and where we're at today, we all know reality can differ from that. And so what these agreements include often is a look-back provision. And what that allows to happen is that, once the project is built and constructed, there's an opportunity to see, did it cost less than we thought? And if so, there's a mechanism to reduce the city's assistance. And then there's also a look at the time of stabilization of the project to say, are those returns on investment as we anticipated, or are they more? And if they're more, it provides a mechanism to reduce the city's assistance. So we've protected on the front end that we're not offering upfront any more than we think is necessary based on projections. And then, through that agreement, trying to make sure that, you know, the developer isn't earning any more with city money than it otherwise should have, based on how we entered into the agreement, going into it at the front end. So that would be built in there, too. It's another layer of protection for the city. And then, once all that happens, and that agreement's in place, it is, it is now the developer's responsibility to go out there and finance and construct this entire project. They would have to do all of that. Other than when the, you know, the time to pay those fees would come, and to forgive those, that would be one administrative element. And then, when it gets built, there would be the abatement repayments back. But other than that, you know, all of the infrastructure responsibility, the vertical construction, all of that would be on the developer to do. And the city would be effectively, you know, kind of, other than, as I said, that the abatement and the fee forgiveness done with, with this public financing aspect of the project. So-
Can you go back a few screens where you showed how much in taxes we'd be getting this year?
Yes.
Okay. So currently, like, if nothing happened, and we just walked away, like, this whole thing died, right? The total taxes we're getting on this property is thirteen thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and sixty-nine cents.
Right.
So it's pretty much what we'd be getting that first year. So we'd already be coming, like, as a city, we're already getting significantly more in the very second year. Is that, am I understanding that correctly?
Yes, that's correct. The one additive thing I will say to that is that this is also over and above what is currently being paid.
Okay.
And we've made in this, well, yeah, so this is above the current payments of taxes. So yes, it's in addition to.
So in addition to, okay. So, so really, we're, we're getting, we're not losing.
With the, the exception that the only liability we have is services. I mean, it's services.
Yes, and that I would need to know. I have no idea how much that costs. I would rely on.
Yeah, and in talking with the staff, it seemed like the ongoing amount, the one-hundred-and-eighteen-thousand, seemed like a more than reasonable number to think about with respect to providing those services. Yeah.
Full-time plus body. The look back, what triggers that? And what would you put in there to trigger that?
Well, so there's two things. One is completion of the project. So we review all the costs, and it's as simple as that. If the costs are less, there's a mechanism to reduce. It's typically a sharing, right? It isn't like we keep all of it. It's, we don't want to remove all incentive to improve on the project. So there's usually a, a sharing of the reduction. So that's-
So is that an automatic thing, or is there something that triggers the look back?
Well, so, in the, in the first case, it would be project completion. Once the certificate of occupancy is issued, and all the project costs have been incurred, we would then look at it at that point.
For each phase, or?
We'd have to, yes. But these are details of the agreement. But yes, we can, we could, we would talk about when, if it's everything built, if it's, yeah, we'll have to look at it that way in the, in the details. And then typically, what happens is, there is a review once they're stabilized. And so what that means is fully occupied, and generating what would be, you know, actual permanent net operating income and cash flow. And so that typically is defined as around ninety-five percent occupied.
That was going to be a question. And not that you would do it, but so someone can't just hold one apartment back, and be like, oh, we're not fully occupied. And not that you would do it, but so someone can't just hold one apartment back and be like, oh, we're not fully occupied.
And, uh, they do. Uh, and so the way that those are written now is that, um, there, the look back will, will actually happen, at the earlier of, um, potentially nine, 95% occupancy or, uh, at a time certain. So that, you know, because we've had problems where, you know, to your point, well, we're not there yet, you know?
We have this one apartment.
Yeah, so they'll have to, and, and again, because of the phasing nature of this project and, you know, all of that, we'll have to work all those details in that agreement, but there will definitely be hard timelines for both of those things to occur.
Yeah, so my reaction on this is that I think, I think this represents a path for us that, that could be viable. I think that there's still more to understand, at least for me, around what, um, some of the additional costs, you know, are those truly cities' obligations? Or would they have reasonably been considered part of the development? And, you know, maybe as it stands, that, that's, they're all fine. I just don't know that I understand that clearly enough. Um, but I think, for me anyway, this, this sounds a, a lot more promising than where we were last month.
Yeah, where that, where that breakover point is will be, you know, be kind of interesting to me. I did look at a lot of those, those costs and I, I could see where you could argue some of those are city responsibility.
You know, I think, and Mayor, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I just, I just want, uh, the, I, I did not, so we know that those roadway costs and public infrastructure costs need to be incurred for this project to actually go in and function, right? So we, and I, and I think that, I looked at it where I don't care, you know, like what, you know what I mean? I just looked at what do we, what does the project need to pay for?
Yep.
And what is their return on investment? I didn't, and, and even we talked about this, I don't care if it was the stoplight or I just said, I don't even want to talk about that. I just want to talk about what is, what is it going to take to get this done? And if they do it and pay for all of it, what's their return on investment? So I didn't even get bogged down into what cost and where are they and all that. And there's also the added piece that there will be other beneficiaries of this infrastructure. And I didn't even build any of that into these assumptions about taxes that might come forward. But it's safe to assume that, you know, those future projects may not have any real case for the need for any public assistance. You've already done it, you know, by getting that roadway through here. And so there's just potentially for the city more upside there if and when those other areas develop.
So at this point, you're just looking for a go ahead?
I think the question is, yeah, I mean, if, you know, we'd spend more time digging into the numbers, we would come back. If, if the concept is agreeable to everybody, I think, we don't want to, if not, we don't, I mean, I think we'd like to know that. I know that there's some timelines that the developer's working through here. Um, and, and we would come back even maybe as soon as, um, in a couple of weeks with that term sheet and all those details that I talked about. Um, and then follow that up very shortly thereafter, potentially with that public hearing that I mentioned. So if it's agreeable, then, uh, we would propose, just because of the timelines that have been, um, you know, that developers working under, to come back quickly. Um, so yeah, some feedback, if, if there's concerns, great to hear those now, I think, yeah.
Well, I'm, I think I'm on board.
Yeah, and I don't have any concerns about trying to speed it up. I think a lot of our stuff takes too long anyway, so. Coming back sooner would be all right. Maybe we can start the new year.
Everybody else?
I'm on board as far as, I mean, I was on board if we could, could get it done with, with foregoing the fees. But adding that extra $2 million, I was not on board for. And, and I mean, if we, if this is an avenue to get it done and forego the fees and, and get it done, I'm on board.
Good.
I mean, I think that's, that's probably all we need. Yeah. I mean, again, just in general, just trying to finalize what the developer's looking to do as well. That helps us, um, try to figure out the fee forgiveness and also figures out our abatement dollars and just overall with them.
I mean, with the, with the initial thought we had last time, we would have run risk if we were to do any bonding or, you know.
Correct.
Just wipes out, wipes that out.
Yeah. So again, it's just more or less just getting that figured out, but we appreciate the council's time and such, so. Okay. I don't have anything else for this one.
Yeah, some more breathing room.
Thank you. This is what a, you know, a month worth of work can do.
Oh, yeah.
Is, you know, identifying this pathway.
The other, you now have 30 minutes to use up though. I think you can get there.
Welcome to the new council. Um, yeah, so I would just would, I don't have much to add because everything that you said is, uh, is favorable. So let me just say that from a timing perspective, our plan would be, as Jason just said, in two weeks, we can come back. And all this stuff, frankly, we've been working on it quite well the last week or two. Um, so we'll have no problem having this to staff well early enough that you guys can peek in and see this and won't be, uh, you know, getting it, uh, right before council. Um, and then, uh, yeah, we're, everything is kind of clipping along quite well. So I think this pathway, uh, I think this works as a, as a good solution for getting us where we're headed off.
And we would do the public hearing at the council meeting then?
So based on our newspaper and postings that we would be able to have that public, actual public hearing and notices until February 11th or whenever the first council meeting is in February. Um, the idea would be to get a term sheet in front of us, in front of the council on the 28th of January. So you have all the information done. Jason will help you.
Does that get coupled with the plat?
Um, yep, so that'll get, it will be an informal agreement to the council that says that you're willing to do this process based on all of the analysis that, um, Ellers and Jason Oswald has done for us essentially. Essentially comes up with a term sheet, says here's what it's going to be, here's all the information, here's exactly what you're going to see on the public notice. Nothing will change from that time to the public notice, but the public notice is the official action. The, um, term sheet is essentially just the non-binding agreement that, yeah, we're going to do this, that sounds good. And you'll see that on the 28th, that'll be the plan.
So the T F, the term sheet that we see and go over on the 28th?
Yes.
Is going to basically be unchanged, save for the formal stuff at the top and the bottom.
Yep.
And that's what's going to come through his, the public notices and would ultimately be, uh, approved on the Tuesday, the February 11th. But I think prior to that, or, or at least we'll have to talk through, um, you know, our current trajectory with at least the final plat. And there was the typical plat and development agreement. Those have been sort of slated for the 28th. And what I don't, I haven't worked enough yet with Jason to figure out how this abatement and the agreement and how that may, may not impact. But I think bottom line is we'll be here very well prepared on the 28th. And then again, on the 11th and between the two of them, I think it'll give us everything that we need to, you know, put out there and, you know.
If we, if we put, excuse me, if, if, uh, production or project costs come in higher than what you're projecting, that's not on the city then, is it? Because our, our amount of incentive is, is going to be a certain number.
Correct. It won't go up, but it could go down.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a max not to exceed number and then could go down from there. Let's say the developer's able to save a bunch of costs on construction and
Right.
he comes into and he has it filled at 95% way quicker than he expected to be fantastic and he's getting his revenue in sooner. The abatement can go down from there based on costs, but they will never go up.
Yep.
And that's an advantage for both of us too, because I mean, he fills it up faster, he's getting revenue in his pocket quicker. And then we're out, you know, we don't have to bait as much, so it's a win for both of us.
So play this out for me just because, well, it's where-
We got time.
-it took me and we have lots of time. Um, so you're taking on the obligation for this cost and using the rebated tax revenue to make payments on the thing. So, nobody wishes this, right? But you go belly up. Project fails, now there's a lender on the hook for that, that cost. Who you borrowed the money from? Right? So that's not an obligation to the city, but it, the bank owns it, somebody owns it. What happens to the road then?
Well-
Do we lose those assets or how does that, how does that play out? Somebody's out some money here or are we out of road?
Well, I think it would depend on when what you're describing actually occurred. I mean, if it ha, I mean, uh, that's going to be one of the first things to, you know, be, be built. Um, and then, you know, it's, it's, your development agreement, which I haven't read or don't know what it says for the, for, for him, obligates, I think, you to turn that over to the city. So if that had happened, um, you know, uh, after that, then it's there and it's in place. Um, but I don't know before that.
So let me make this comment, I forget, it must've been you because you did all the, the presentation. Uh, when you talk about this versus sort of feet on the ground in the reality, right? So here's the good news, in a waterfall, the street is highly protected, right? So if we follow the money, the money is the taxes, right? So there's an obligation by us, the developer, to pay taxes twice a year. It's budgeted and it's there. At no time would, in a, a, a bank, I'm just saying, at no time that I'm aware of, a bank in this case is going to have a $30 million mortgage on these apartments. Are they going to allow a foreclosure to occur on their $30 million mortgage because of writing a check every six months? Right? They, 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 banks will always, always, always make sure those payments get done on the taxes so that there's no foreclosure that takes place on their primary asset. So there's-
Sure. So this financing is, is then bundled in with the whole project?
It's all tied, it's all tied, yeah, correct. The lenders that are putting out-
You're using this rebate money to pay toward your overall mortgage.
Yeah, I mean, if you think about it this way, it's just, yes, I mean, we've, we're getting loan proceeds. And the way that this would sort of be set up is they're going to come in and loan us additional dollars that we use to build the property, uh, excuse me, the road, because we have additional revenue that has said, when we pay the taxes, we can count that and apply it over here to, to serve their debts. But they're looking at the total of both the road and the vertical. And, uh, and there's no way that the road is going to go into deep because you've got a $35 million asset that you have to have that road to get to. So, I mean, I, I think that on a practical matter, David, the bank is going to never, never, ever allow that to go now.
Unlikely scenario, I just was curious how that kind of played out, so, thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that with, with this plat program, the other thing, just, and I think you mentioned this, but, the work that we've been doing since, you know, October, I guess, and November and December with all this wet land and working through, you know, if you will, the city property. And Ben and I have spent countless time really designing this lower project. And as a result of that, we've, we've been able to increase density into the earlier projects, right? Those units that we're going to be able to pull permits on in 2025, they weren't really slated to be permitted until like '27, '28, '29. And, and so really at the end of the day, would be kind of fun for all of us in, uh, you know, a month or two or whenever it is, if we look back to the time when I come in and meet you guys the first time in June of '23 with the concept plan and we talked about this multi-year, you know, it's working out even kind of at and above what that was. But I think our, um, you know, the, the project density that we have, the amount of, of units and then the work that Maxfield researched, if you guys, did they get a copy of the, uh, thing, Zach? The market study of that?
Should have, I believe. Yeah, I believe the last meeting they sent that out.
Yeah, all right. Oh, that's right. Okay, we did at least get that over to you.
I'll make sure that, um, Caltmore, Van Aston and Caltmore, Hatterson get that, so you guys have those.
But in any event, I think in the end, the, you know, the excess time that we have, it would have been great to break ground in May last year and not have the E A W. But, you know, I think truly as a, from an economic development perspective, I think all of us should know that we've got a, a really, really nice, uh, sustainable and attainable neighborhood, right? This isn't so ridiculously high, nor is it affordable housing. It's really, we've got a great product at the great location. And I'm really proud to say, I think we'll have, uh, you know, it'll be a nice thing for all of you and the community for decades to come, so. That's all I have. So happy new year and nice to see you. Welcome, congratulations and, uh-
Thank you.
Hey, don't look at me, Anna.
No, I just, um, was going to say that I did update, um, some of the, the average per quarter rent for 2025.
Great.
For both, for the, um, phase, well, I don't know if we're calling it phase two or three now.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, but for those, for the 232 and a quarter. So I updated that and then updated also as to from our original work, what 2025 rents would be estimated as a.
So, yeah, just want to make sure that record shows that it's updated rents were done based on the analysis that was completed previously, but updated rents done from-
This is Maxfield research, by the way. So they, third parties, sort of noted it, Jason, and she's done, uh, the rent holes and so forth.
Just want to make sure the minutes reflect what she had mentioned, so that everyone can hear it.
Okay.
And we've passed that over to Jason in, in these reports, so, yeah.
I think you guys are green light, so we'll expect green nail polish.
I'm telling you, I almost had Ridley coming up. I told her, I said, you have to come up, you know, I said, you gotta, you have to explain it to do it. She's like, uh-uh, no, I'm not going. Anyway, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, any other questions, like Mayor, Council?
Assume that, how's that land? The city own land? Are we still planning on giving the whole chunk or just what's in it?
The plan is just be able to, um, give the, so Mayor, um, to address your question, uh, the idea would be to give the land for where the road goes for a dollar. That was the plan for at least to get the roadway through.
What would be the right away?
Right away, essentially, and then nothing else would go. Let's stay with us for now.
Okay.
There may be, uh, you know, a conversation we have about anything south of that roadway, just because it's all wetland. Um, there is a direct benefit for the developer to be able to utilize that for other offsets of wetland on his property. So there may be some conversation we have with overall.
It's land that's worthless for us.
It's, um, you can't do anything with it and we're not going to be able to wetland bank it or do anything with it. So it's kind of, um, give or take depending which way you want to look at it. It's still property, but it's also not usable for both.
So we could get another dollar for it.
Maybe. You could, again, if you bake it in for the cost, then it ends up costing more for the roadway, so it, that's up to zeros.
Are we adjourned?
Anything else you'd like, yeah, otherwise you can adjourn.
Objections will be adjourned? We're adjourned.